I'm going to tell him to mute himself.
I'd like to call to order the Arido County Board of Commissioners four o'clock pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, September the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to let everybody know that Commissioner Halp has called in. He's looking at the weather, so he's going to call in this evening. I'd like to ask the county manager, I know we have some adjustments to the agenda, if we can go over those, please.
We do, we have two adjustments. The first is removal under administrative matters, which is item eight point four. That will come back at our next commissioner meeting. And then the other is the addition of economic development under closed session, and that's pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A four.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We do not have any special recognitions and awards tonight at the six, but we do have an appointment before the board at our four o'clock. And I'll hand it back over to you, ma'am, to start that off.
Absolutely, thank you Chair Conley. I'm going to introduce Darcy Heath, and she is going to kind of set the stage for a presentation regarding our community survey results.
So, the community survey was something that was started before I was hired, got put on pause. So, we worked with our rep, Robert, who is calling in, who's going to help present virtually. So, with his assistance, wrote questions that everyone had seen, got sent out mailed, and these are now the results of this survey. Is he there?
Yes, he's there. All right.
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, well, appreciate the opportunity to be speaking with you this afternoon on behalf of ETC Institute. You have a screen in front of you that shows a little bit about ETC, where we're located, how long we've been doing business, and the type of business we've been doing. We're very pleased to have worked with your staff, we've been great throughout this process. And, like I said, it's my pleasure to go through the results with you. Next slide. So, this is what we're going to go through, I'm not going to read all these word for word, but just communicate about how we're going to proceed this afternoon. Next slide, we're going to talk about the purpose and methodology. Why do counties and cities conduct these types of citizen engagement surveys? One is to objectively assess satisfaction with your services and also perception of the community. We hear a lot from individuals, but they don't necessarily reflect the entire community, so this gives you the opportunity to do that in a statistically valid manner. We're able to compare your performance to other communities in the United States, and we're also hopefully here to help you determine some priorities, and pretty much share your residents better. Next slide. A bit of background on the methodology, so it was administered by mail and online between May and July of this year. We had a goal of six hundred completed surveys, and actually, we received six hundred and thirty completed surveys, so very good. Shows us that you had a lot of interest in the community to participate and to voice their opinions. Look at those results, the margin of error, you have a margin of error of plus or minus three point nine percent, that's extremely good. Most of the time, if you hear results from surveys, election time and that sort of thing, they're plus or minus five percent is considered sort of standard, so you're better than that. We're pleased with that response. Next slide. Gives you a good idea, we wanted to show you that, yes, we designed the survey and executed the survey based on looking at your last census. We want to be comparable to the census, so it's something that can be replicatable down the road. We want to make sure we're geographically well represented. You can kind of see the spread, the red dots there. All of the results, by the way, are confidential, we never divulge any individual's responses if they took time to fill out the survey. Next slide. Gives you an idea of the spread of the age groups. You can see that all age groups were well represented here, with twenty-one percent of them being over the age of sixty-five, but eighteen percent of them being between eighteen and thirty-four. Next slide. We have both new and long-term residents who are well represented, again, you can kind of see the spread by the different colors there, with twenty-six percent of the respondents being residents of thirty-one years or more, and seventeen percent five years or less. Next slide. All, and this is well represented, and again, it's easy to look at here leisure, but the whole point is to let you know it wasn't lopsided towards one particular demographic group. Next slide. Again, all genders too. Next slide. The first topic we really wanted to look at was satisfaction with county perception and perceptions of your, the different services, how satisfied your residents are. Next slide. Before we really dive into these charts, I want to explain to you, most of the time, they're going to look like this one, where it's asking about ratings of satisfaction. The dark blue is going to represent excellent, the light blue is good, neutral is gray, and below average or poor is representing why. One thing I do want to mention before we start really is that, a lot of times when I work with communities and we go over the numbers, the tendency is to really try to focus on the people, the below average or poor, or very dissatisfied, or dissatisfied. What I really think a lot of people overlook is the gray, and I'll tell you what it represents to me, is that people took the time to fill out the survey, basically only to not share their opinion, because they're in a neutral situation. And, we find through a lot of our work that, a lot of times, if you're wanting to reach, if you really want to move the needle with those residents, the key is information and communication. A lot of those, it's much more difficult to reach somebody who's dissatisfied or very unhappy with something. A lot of times it might be a long recent perception that they have based on an experience or two years ago, but the folks that are neutral, that's fine to ask, that they can be reached more easily. And, again, it's really just a snapshot in time and perception of the residents, but the gray area, neutral, are generally easier to move more into that gray or excellent category. We looked at items such as, look at the county as a place to live, it's a place to raise children. You can see very positive responses there, with seventy-eight percent of the residents saying that Arido County is an excellent or good place to live. You look at a place to find affordable housing, that's one of the areas that really is significant. What we do in this space is, we want to encourage outreach and have this be part of your discussion. Anytime you get over twenty percent of your residents kind of agreeing that something is below average or poor, or, you know, not where it needs to be. Again, can't draw too many conclusions, but the need is there, to have more communication going on with this, and what can we do. Next slide. I will get into specific services. We had very hot results with actually very satisfied or satisfied, with only six percent being somewhat or very dissatisfied in those top three categories, or the quality of emergency services, quality of nine-one-one services, and sheriff protection. You get down to the bottom in terms of quality of public transit, and quality of county department of social services, weight relative to the one. Next slide. We asked if you've contacted the county with a question, problem, or complaint during the last year. We had seventy-five percent actually said yes, or said no, I'm sorry, and no, they have not. Next slide. But we did look at those, for those people who did have those experiences, they were generally very satisfied with the interaction that they received. So, most people don't really have a specific need or issue, but those who do have received fairly positive responses either at the top, they're courtesy of county employees, the interactive, appropriateness of county employees' response, timeliness, et cetera. And, you know, seventy-two percent being very satisfied or satisfied. Slide. And we look at how that compares to other communities, we look both regionally and nationally. Next slide. What we have, we do comprehensive surveys all over the country, and so it's not a comparison of a particular city to city or county to county, but we're looking at what we call the Atlantic region. Your scores are in the dark blue, the Atlantic region is in the red hash, and the US averages are in the yellow. So, look again at the place to live, you rated seventy-eight point five being very satisfied or excellent or poor. Excellent and five, poor was a one, and here I have seventy-eight point five. So, it's significantly higher than the other averages you can see there. Next slide. You rated significantly higher than both the regional average and national averages for quality of sheriff protection. Significantly, so we highlight those in the dark blue there, if it's more than the margin of error. You can see, there are a couple of items there, maybe that warrants further discussion, when you look at comparisons to quality of animal services and quality of public transit. Also want to look at investment priorities, one of the things that we observe sometimes through our work, it used to be that we would just ask, how important is something, or how satisfied are you with a particular service? And they get a response, but if you don't follow that after the response of how important is it to you, it can give you kind of a skewed picture. So, we learned that you need to both ask how satisfied are you, but how important is it to you as well. Next slide. So, here's, putting those three numbers together, you can see, it's an overall county services, there's fourteen different services listed. And you can see, the first part there, you see quality of the K-12 school facilities as a very high priority, and you can see how it's considered a combination of, it's the most important rank, and it's also seventh in terms of, or thirteenth in terms of how satisfied residents are. High priorities being quality of public transit, quality of parks and recreation, quality of county department of social services, and quality of public health services. And you can see, even though you have relatively low quality of animal services, it really does not rise to the level of some of these others in terms of the overall priority. And you put that in simple terms, so let's say, you asked me in a list of park services, and you said, how satisfied are you with the dog park, or parks? And I said, well, I'm really dissatisfied with that, perhaps put it at the bottom of the list, last night I took my dog Buster, there he got chased around, left up by some other dogs. And if you only look at that, you might say, okay, well, then something like quality tax administration services, or availability of arts and cultural amenities in here, that should be the first thing that you look at, because they're the lower on the top in terms of satisfaction rate. But then if you ask me how important is it, I might say, well, it's not important at all, I don't really care about the dog park, I'm happy upon these other areas. So, that's kind of what we've done here in terms of trying to help prioritize all these items. Next slide. This shows the communication, and you can see, you can see here that the level of public involvement in county decision-making, and county efforts to be open and transparent with information, those rank as a very high priority. With effectiveness of county communication with the public, county efforts to connect you with resources and availability of information about county services and activities being a hot priority. Again, this doesn't, this isn't just a snapshot in time, it doesn't necessarily mean that you aren't doing something. A lot of times, when we talk about communication, use of a website or things like that, and the client will say, well, we don't understand these results, because we just spent a whole bunch of money in a year updating our website. So, you have to remember, a lot of these responses are based on interactions they've had, or perceptions they've had with the county. Again, with only twenty-five percent of them interacting directly with the county on any particular issues in the last, in the last year, there's still a lot of people who have not, and so moving the needle can be somewhat difficult, and you have to really lean into it. Next slide. We have some other findings based on some questions we wanted to ask specifically about the county. Next slide. We wanted to know why, why choose to live in the county when people have options, these days, to live just about anywhere? Proximity to family and friends, and the local tax rate and cost of living are the main reasons that people chose to live here alone, with low crime and housing options. Next slide. We asked, over the next five years, what will have the biggest impact on your decision to stay in the county? Again, those, being close to family and friends is probably not going to change the local tax rate, cost of living. Now, that is something we don't always see, or is it, you know, people, relatively speaking, not extremely unhappy with the local tax rate? It says you're doing things right, you're demonstrating to the public that there's value in the services you're providing, the crime rate, and that going to farm and housing violence are pretty much near the reasons why they moved in at first glance. Next slide. We asked, what issues do we think would be most important for the county to address over the next twenty years? So, it's sort of a long-range vision question. Number one, and here we have, I should say, the first choice is dark blue, second choice is gray, and third choice is in salmon. So, you have fifty-two percent of the responses, either first, second, or third choice would be safety and low crime, followed by healthcare access and public transportation, and support systems for Asian population. At the bottom of the list, library services, college and both secondary education, and overall health, and job training being relatively not quite as important. Next slide. We asked future priorities that should receive the most emphasis from the county over the next five years. Increase in conservation of farms and environmental sensitive land, providing access to quality healthcare, and increasing public safety would all be really high on the list there. Again, in this one, we asked, we allowed for four choices. Next slide. In order to move the needle, sometimes you really need to ask, well, how, you know, if we can improve our communication, kind of even though starting, you know, what, how do you prefer to get your information about the county? Looks like local TV news is tops the list just barely along with your county Facebook page, and county text messages, phone calls, and emails, and your website. At the bottom, board commissions, live streams, some people that use that. Not as many in-person engagement and events and local radio are towards the bottom of the list. Still, can be important, but not as important as some of the other items. Next slide. Well, in summary, your residents are generally very satisfied with the overall perception of the county. High ratings, a place to live, raise children, and overall quality of life, especially when you compare those with the region that nationally are doing quite well in a number of categories. The services of residents are most satisfied with our quality of EMS, emergency nine-one-one services, and quality of sheriff protection. Priorities to investment, quality of K-12 schools, and also the quality of public transit. Next slide. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions from my end. Appreciate it again, the opportunity to be here.
Any questions from the board?
Have a question, Bert.
Yes, sir.
When you do the, when you do the survey, do you have any explanation in your questions as to who's responsible for the things you ask for? Like, for example, the county, as far as schools, our main function is the school capital. The revow that we do for taxes is mandated by law, every, you know, every eight, but we do it every four to lessen the impact. And like the roads, you know, that's a state DOT situation, or municipality, if they live within the town or municipality. Are there any explanations in the questions as to, or is it just in general, what they see as a priority in the county they live? How was the question asked of them?
Yeah, there was no elaboration in terms of, if I'm hearing you right, whether it was a direct responsibility of the county, or a direct service by the county, or by some other jurisdiction. It's just a perception of different, different services and impact, and mostly we tried to look at, obviously, county services. But there are some areas where, where we, you know, it may be provided by another jurisdiction, governmental entity, but it's still, it's still important to have that knowledge, whether it's something you can directly resolve or not. I know sometimes the schools are not in a direct purview, but knowing how important they are, that information could be important to share with the, with the school district, to perhaps open dialogue with the school district about things like, that may impact both the county and the schools, things like child readiness, economic development, things like that. So, no, and I, what I would tell you, this is the first survey. Um so so no, and and I, all right, what I would tell you, this is the first survey that we've done with you, and based on this and no feedback, um we do a follow-up survey in in a couple of years, um which is what most of our clients do. Um, we end up being able to elaborate a little bit more once we kind of know maybe which of those hot buttons are. For example, I have communities that will have um major interstates and other road systems going through that are managed by the state and the feds and they're not um you know, it's, they they feel the responses, the the negative responses can be um kind of frustrating because, you know, it's it's not their direct responsibility. But if we know that, that's a hot button, we can, you know, we can call that out a little bit more in the questions in the future.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think it would make a difference, you know, in in our world that we live in politically, the board. You know, a lot of times people come from, you know, various areas around the country. Um in the areas they come from, up north or wherever, the counties may have responsibilities for roads and other things that we typically don't, like water source, that's the municipality or town. Um, so I think sometimes in the surveys, it would be helpful to try and educate as an overview for the survey, um if they're unhappy especially about something, is whose responsibility that is? We get a whole lot of blame a lot of times for things we're not, that's not in our lane, I guess, per 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 se. So that's why I wanted to ask you, you know, in some of the responses you gave or the survey, I wasn't sure the people, if they knew in general whose responsibility it was and they're unha- if they're unhappy or needs improvement, or if they're just in general answering the question overall.
Yeah, I I completely understand where you're coming from and you're making a valid point. Um, in in this instance, where we happen to just be asking overall, you know, how satisfied are you without, without trying to further identify whose responsibility it is, which jurisdiction. Thank you very much for your work on it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You know, a- after seeing the survey, that just makes more people want to move here. So we need to get the sheriff to quit doing such a good job and and maybe uh maybe people quit moving here. So get our crime rate up a little bit, but but it is, uh, you know, it's it's one of the best counties there is.
Commissioner Stroud, you got anything or vice chair? You know, one of my biggest things is residents must not only feel safe, but they have to be safe. And that comes from all public safety directions, from law enforcement to EMS, to ECOM, to fire, to rescue squad, to everything, and it it's critical. And we got to have the employees and we got to look after the employees that do this job and do it every single day. I know, Darcy, you've put your heart in this thing since you've been coming, since you came on board with us. You've worked very, very hard on this, and we appreciate you doing that. We appreciate the people, the citizens trust out here that trust us every day to make these decisions and to set the budgets of these departments and offices to make sure that they've got the money to do what they need to do to make this happen. So it's a tight rope we got to do, but we we do it and we try our very best at it, so. But our residents, they got to feel safe, but they also got to be safe at the same time. So you can talk, people talk safety, you know, this and that, but if you don't feel it and it actually happens, you don't have anything, so. It's kind of like going on vacation. You don't go somewhere, you're going to get shot at and robbed, you know, so you don't want to live in a place like that either, so. But thank you very much, Darcy, on that.
Thank you.
County manager, you got anything to put in for this?
Um, I'll just put, I'll just say one thing. So the results of this survey are going to be results that we will make sure are incorporated in our strategic plan. And when we bring things to the board as far as budget requests for the next coming years, this really helps make sure that we're going in the right direction based on the feedback from our citizens. So um this will be something that we'll we'll keep bringing back to you and um we'll use this as explanation for why we're doing the things we're doing, um the direction that we're going, the focus that we need, the we maybe need to turn focus towards a few different things. The good news is, our second highest expenditure behind education is public safety. So um and the survey is bearing out that you have invested in that and the citizens appreciate that. They're happy with the investment that you're putting into public safety, and they want you to to know that that's something that is near and dear in their hearts, which speaks volumes to the board being connected to our citizens and what what they're wanting and what their desires are. So um one thing that's important to point out, we saw that we had a deficiency as far as communicating out the services that we provide, which is why Darcy's here. So Darcy is doing a really good job making sure that we're getting information out to our citizens and, you know, putting it out in a way that they are wanting the message, um the different venues that that they're asking for. So we still have a lot of work to do, but the good news is, based on the survey, we're really headed in the right direction. We may need to kind of change courses a little bit here and there, but as far as the general direction we're going, we're we're doing the right thing and heading in the right direction, so.
And it looks like growth is on the mind of some folks too, saving farmland, saving preservation of this and that. But people need to understand kind of what Commissioner Haupt said, you know, we don't do roads.
Right.
And we don't have to prove annexations.
Right.
You know, we've pretty much said on ETJ, we've only done one ETJ, ETJ release uh since December of 22, and that was one small parcel of property, one small house that boarded up to Morrisville so a person could stay on their historic commission.
That was initiated by the owner of that property?
Yes.
Yes.
And, you know, if somebody goes out here, Statesville Troutman, Morrisville, Harmony, anybody goes out here and does a big housing development, we can't say no. But we have to say yes on building schools, we have to say yes on the hard choices that we have, but we have no say on it. So and I think some of our city council members need to kind of go back to 101 and learn some of these processes and the way it happens and the way it occurs. And some statements have been made that are not correct, and I think we may hit on those at the six o'clock hour a little bit too, so. Anybody have anything?
Commissioner Conley, and I wanted to bring up, it just kind of hit me as as commit, as uh uh county manager was talking. One of the areas it showed that the the folks want us to 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 look or want more of is uh public transit ICATS. And I want to point out that we recently made, prior to this coming out, an investment um towards the future of our of our ICATS and the purchase of a property to uh um have better facilities and services to be able to, so, you know, we hear, we hear, but uh some of it's already, we were already looking and uh and so we're we're trying to be proactive um in those areas.
You know, a- a- another, another piece of that is um some of the survey results said to um focus on school facilities. We'll look at what this board has done in this fiscal year as far as financial investment to get additional school facilities built. So um a lot of these things, and and quite frankly, looking at the survey, it goes back and and you can kind of check and say, okay, we we were right with that. We we've, we're investing now. Is it going to take a couple of years to see that? Yes, because it's going to take a little while to get these facilities built. But that's an investment that this board has already put money in, understanding that that's a need our community is expressed that they need and and as a result of the growth that we're experiencing. So it really does help kind of validate some of the tough decisions this board has made, that they are, they're making those tough decisions because it's, it is a need that's out there, and the citizens are validating that decision.
And we're doing it without paying interest.
Doing it without paying interest, yes, for the, specifically for Parkertown, for the elementary school, yes. That that is a cash investment for that school facility.
Going down our agenda, we do have a public hearing. Go, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jean.
I just was going to ask Beth and Darcy if they put this on the website, if that's the intent. Maybe as a, maybe as an overview of the of the results of the study, maybe Darcy could mention in response, if people want to go look at it, look at the survey, as to, you know, if a priority is like Beth mentioned, school uh facilities and all those things, just mentioned the amount of investments and the fact that we have, you know, put a lot of the county's uh needs and facilities on hold to be able to meet those mandated requirements and as far as roads and other things that you may see in the survey. I'm not specifically looking at it, I couldn't get it in my PDF. But maybe put an overview, you know, under or above the comments of the survey as to, you know, the things we've invested in, we're working in the right directions and all that, if you get, if she could work on that potentially.
I I will say, Darcy has already drafted a press release that is um ready to go out after this was presented to the board. So she's, she's, she's right there with you, Commissioner Haupt. She's already got a press release that's ready to go, and this is going to be something that she's going to be pushing out and and focusing on um for the foreseeable future.
Great job, great job, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Going down the list, we do have a public hearing tonight at six o'clock. It'll be in regards to the fiscal year '27 transportation grants for ICATS. Now brings us down to our administrative matters that we will cover. If you want to kick those off, county manager.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair Conley. The first item is a request from Planning and Development for approval of a resolution amending the map review officers list. And Mr. Matthew Todd is here to make this presentation to the board.
Very short, it's just covered. Any questions? We do this on a regular basis.
Any questions for Matthew? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the library to apply for a grant in the amount of $17,500 from Duke Energy Foundation. And Ms. Julie Moore is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening. Um, the library requests approval to apply for a grant through Duke Energy Foundation, and we'd like to thank Brittany Schneider for bringing this grant to our attention. We're applying for this all because of her. Um, we want to apply for this grant to establish a tech lab within the library that'll be used for library programming and can be utilized by the public. The library proposes the purchase of a laser engraver, a 3D printer, a sublimation printer, a cricket maker, heat presses for garments and tumblers, an embroidery machine, and iPads to run software for each piece of technology. Not only can this technology be used for library program, but it can also be utilized by our patrons to create projects and prototypes that might be needed to start or expand their own business. One of the libraries recently, library employees recently completed the LEAF program, which is Libraries for Entrepreneurial Advancement. And the LEAF program is a new statewide fellowship for librarians in North Carolina to develop their skills in order to support entrepreneurs and small businesses with the goal of making libraries hubs for economic development within the communities they serve. As part of her participation in the program, ICPL's employee has created a space within the library to house books, resources, and materials that pertain pertain to entrepreneurship and developing your own business. And she'll also be starting library programming in October for information sessions on business startup and collaboration with Mitchell Community College. With the addition of this equipment, she'll be able to offer hands-on programming and training for those interested in making their small business dreams a reality. And our teen librarian would also like to utilize these pieces of equipment um to expand and enhance teen program offerings. And Amanda will be happy to answer any questions because she's the one who will be writing the grant and has done all the research. Um, in your packet, there is a brief program description and then the budget that Amanda created with the cost of each piece of equipment.
Any questions?
Now, just when do you hope to hear back on this as far as, I know it, I believe it was in the packet on the information on?
So there's, the the grant works on a rolling calendar year, so we can apply as soon as we receive approval. Um, I'm not really sure how quickly they will get back, but it would be before the end of the year.
But that would be, I've got to say, because this right here just offers so much, it's 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 unlimited as far as just what your imagination and the need could come up with on that, so.
And we'll be taking our existing upper level conference room that we compute, converted into a computer lab that right now has six laptops and a large screen for projection. We have room in there to house all of the equipment in that space. So we already have a place for it to go where it will be secure in the facility, but also accessible.
Fantastic. Would you be able to keep us posted on that as you hear? I would like to know, which is very interesting on that one too, and congratulations on the mobile unit as well.
Thank you.
You know, I was teasing these ladies about being here about every meeting and and they were telling me that, you know, they're bringing us another grant. And you know what? This, this is great. They they do an awesome job and, you know, I applaud you all for finding these grants and continuing to do what you do, even with a little help back there, you know.
Teamwork is what, yeah, just, yeah.
But we do, we appreciate you, and the people of this county, I mean, that's, it's free money for this county. We thank you.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. The next item was a request from Veteran Services to apply for the Walmart Spark Good Grant for the Wall of Heroes tribute. And Ms. Brittany Schneider is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening. The Wall of Heroes showcases the veterans of Iredell County by recognizing the bravery, dedication, and patriotism of these veterans. It will offer a space for family and friends to reflect and feel appreciated as well as strengthen our community by identifying the the honoring, blame the last, by identifying honoring those who've served. In the attachments, I've broken down by the vision, which is honoring the veterans of Iredell County across all branches and eras. We want to have it on a physical wall. Um, the location is in the Iredell County Government Building. The the personnel who qualify are born in Iredell County or long-term residents of 10 or more years or Iredell County veteran employees. The information that's going to be displayed are the veterans of the, the photos of the veterans and plaques. The photos will be donated by the veteran or family members. Estimated costs for frames, engraved plaques, American flags, and et cetera's um are all factored into the budget line. For inst- for installation is, we're going to um work with facility services for the initial installment of the frames and work with local artists or veterans who want to contribute and create a respectful and visual impact of the design, or use the funds for a wall stencil. We want to launch and nominate, we want to launch a veteran nomination campaign via social media with Facebook, local newspapers, Iredell Free News, churches, VFWs, DAV, and other community centers. Um nominations forums, we can just create one online for anyone who wants to nominate a veteran of the community. They can upload their photo there or come by the office and bring one in. We want to also host a dedicated ceremony where it's more intimate with inviting the local veterans, their family, and public to have that moment of reflection. And general maintenance, they'll probably be routinely um changed out photo-wise, probably on a quarterly basis at minimum. Um, we'll all take accountability on keeping that upkeep going. Yes.
Anybody got anything from Brittany?
Do we know where the wall is going to be?
Presently, it's going to be in the downstairs where Veteran Services is. And then when we decide to move upwards, we'll have all those frames and we'll relocate them.
So it will be inside Veteran Services or in the, in the public area where anyone walking through can see?
Yes, sir. So when you walk into Veteran Services, you'll have that main wall that will have the reflection of all six branches. And it'll, in the middle, will either have the stencil that um says like "Wall of Heroes", and the murals that, if we can have the veterans come and create for us, will be throughout the whole office. And if I do have extra funds, I would like to have that veteran or local artist go and um create a huge wall mural on the outside of this, of the office where we can really showcase even more. My goal at least is to have 50 frames and then we can rotate them out. But with the small space that we do have now, at least 25 to start.
Anybody got anything else? Do we have consent?
Consent. Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out one thing. So right now, Brittany is um still in administration officially, but she'll be transitioning in two days as our new Veteran Services Director. And she's really already doing uh, working with our Veteran Services Department and our veterans. So I want to show her our appreciation and tell her thank you. She's really kind of doing double duty right now, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Hey, Brittany, big shoes to fill, literally, you know.
Uh, and I will tell you, and I, and if if I get yelled at for this in a little bit,
uh-uh.
Um, I'm, I want to publicly nominate Dale Wilson, a triple amputee from Vietnam, while he's still alive, as one of the very first folks to be honored. Iredell County resident, born and raised, and is still here, so like to, I'd like to nominate.
Iredell County resident, born and raised, and is still here, so I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Dale Wilson.
Absolutely.
You can see how powerful this, this can be.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to you in that role.
Item is the item that has been removed from this agenda and it will come back at a next meeting. So we'll move to a request from Tax Administration for approval of the August 2025 releases and refunds. And there are no commissioner names on this list.
Do we have consent?
Consent. Thank you. The next item is a request from Administration to approve minutes from the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Annual Report to the People, which was held on August the 12th, 2025, and the September 2nd, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Do we have consent?
Consent. Consent.
That's all administrative, correct?
We have one other, um, and that is the county construction project updates. And that's just for informational purposes only. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions.
Okay, following our agenda, it brings us down to announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. And I know you want to go over those now and then again at the six.
I do, and I do have, um, two revisions. So, um, the first, we have the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We have six appointments on that board and committee. Central Indiana Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, we have three appointments. The Central Indiana Economic Development District, we have one appointment. Uh, the Mooresville Planning Board, ETJ, uh, the town of Mooresville has said that, that that is not open, that that is a field position. So, um, we need to remove that one. We have, uh, one appointment on the Mooresville Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ, um, member. It says two, but there's actually one. So one appointment on the Mooresville Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ member. The Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have six appointments. Recreation Advisory Board, we have four appointments. And Troutman Planning Board, which is an ETJ member, we have one alternate appointment.
Okay, brings us down to appointments on boards and commissions, and I think we have one for you to go over this evening.
That's correct, yes. We have one for the Fire Tax Oversight Committee.
Any unfinished business for the four o'clock hour? Public comment period is this evening at our six o'clock meeting. Any commissioner updates, or anybody want to wait till the six?
Six is fine.
Okay, any new business? County managers report.
Wait till six.
You know that. Brings us down to closed session. We do have a closed session. Item, Economic Development in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A4. Do we have a motion to enter a closed session after a five-minute recess?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry, Gene. Uh, we will now enter a closed session following a five-minute recess.